What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're looking at three bet pots deep stack from the big blind.
I already lost this hand.
Did you?
I'm checking.
Well, I think it's a good check, right? Cause on flush board like this, you wanna bet based on the suit a lot and then we have showdown. So I don't think we need to bet this one.
It's also a weird board that there's completed equity. So I guess we bet small, but it kinda like it just it's also really connected. Some of those would you wanna bet big like I'm lost on this. I would either bet really small or check.
I think it's a good check here. Very often like one of the things we learn here, you wanna range bet a lot on three bet pots as the aggressor. But if it comes with a flush draw board, you wanna base your strategy on the flush a lot.
So the small bets nice because you're gonna probably clean up some under pairs. So you're not really getting worse to fold, but you're still cleaning up some shit.
And you're getting some, you're getting a lot of protection.
You get random ace X to fold like ace five of diamonds.
Yeah, I don't think you're getting ten to fold though.
Plus we're out of position. So like they could bluff the hell out of us.
Alright. Yeah, that's the big one is you're preventing yourself from getting blocked on future streets.
What about this street?
Checks.
Yeah, I'm checking.
Check, check. Okay, and then?
Great.
You can maybe block bet. We have, we have queens because we checked flop. You can maybe go small and just get like he's gonna have under pairs here that might like, I don't know. Is he hero with pocket eights, pocket sevens?
No.
He calls you with jack ten. He calls you with a ten. You lose.
That's fine. No. Uh, let me just fold, right?
No, I think we call this sometimes.
What? Twenty big?
I don't think it's gonna be a hundred. I don't think it's gonna be a hundred percent.
I mean, what's wrong with you?
That's why I blocked it.
You wanna call here?
Nope.
I wanna call here twenty-five percent of the time.
Never calling.
Twenty, twenty-six point nine.
Twenty-seven, Scotty.
Wait, it goes all in one point two.
I'm a nit, I'm a nit. I only did it twenty-five percent of the time.
It feels like it's not a great call, right?
In real life, it's no, nobody know.
Okay, it's close. Scotty had it. Okay.
I think in real life, by the way, in real life, I think that's their bluffing size. That three quarters there. That's there just enough to get the job done bluff.
Okay.
We could actually check all this one. We have no overs. The board's decent for their range. So I mean, I don't hate to check here.
Uh, it's a three bet pot, Ken.
Yeah, I know. So you're gonna check or you're gonna bet big?
Well, if I treat that six, five, and I get this kind of word, certainly it's not the check. So for me, it's a polar strategy probably here.
If I had at least one over, I'd be more happy to bet.
But probably twelve.
I think you can check and check raise or you can bet large. Yeah, half pot or even seventy-five percent.
I thought about seventy-five percent, but I thought we would have with the upper part of the deck.
Yep. If you had queen, jack of spades, I could get behind seventy-five, but I think this is gonna be twenty-five or fifty. Oh, we have a straight flush draw. So we, we, we check the check raise and then we, uh, yeah, he's big. Do whatever else you want to it.
I think changed.
We didn't pick up equity. We still have a draw.
I think this card is more likely that he breaks.
I think it's kinda, I think a nine's, I think a, I think a nine's kinda neutral.
Yeah, well, it's not good for him.
Well, why not?
It's neutral.
He's got all the suited nines still, right?
He raised some of them.
In position, yeah, maybe ace nine. That's it. Nine, eight, maybe. I doubt it. Maybe though.
That nine pairing makes it, makes it less likely he has one.
I think we can check and probably check jam or we can bet like half pot.
So say you bet here. Do you go with the rest? If you raise the turn?
No, we have to fold.
So fifty percent? And then you fold, you bet fold.
If, if that's your plan, then you should bet smaller.
Yeah, I'd bet twenty-five if I'm gonna bet.
If that's the plan, are we not better off checking?
No. Because he could blast like in this spot, if we had a nine, we would wanna keep him in. So I would be betting like twenty-five percent here, twelve chips. Which sets up a good river jam. I think this is a, I think this is gonna check back like fifty percent of the time. I think it's high frequency check, but you check jam whenever, um, he bets. Yeah, I agree with that. And then, yeah. Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll bet small in this half pot sizing. I think it'll mix those two.
I'm surprised because if this or this is the answer, I'm off because I'm either here or here.
I'm honestly checking a lot, but I give you a small bet.
Pure check. Pure check.
And let's, let's change, let's check and see if we check jam on him if he bets.
I doubt it.
Thing is.
I would bet money we are.
Well, that's what you do. You bet money.
We just have no overs like I think like if you're gonna raise, like I think you want overs at least to be getting out of line when you check jam. Cause if he calls with an eight or whatever, you have outs. Right now we got outs, so many spades really and what? We don't, we have a gutter.
You? Oh, you're done?
Yes, I'm done.
No, check jamming.
No, feels bad.
What if he bets that half pot?
So like look, ten sevens got it over. That's happy to do it.
Roger calls.
Also up and down.
And then? How do we structure a flop side? Kind of size. So big, fifteen? So it's very polar. And then let's have a quick look at the boards. So ace side. Checking a lot. Hmm, what is this we're looking at?
Not getting better aces to fold. You might be betting your lower aces. Oh, he's high board you're looking at. Never mind.
Okay, so let's look at.
Note our overall checking frequency across all board textures is forty-two percent. So if you're range betting everything when you're this deep, it's a huge mistake.
Shocking, right? Look at this. That's what I'm looking at. And then, uh, the table. Yeah. Yeah. Then the
That's because our three bet range is very polarized. So you know, we're gonna have some shit that's just gonna happen when we get called.
Are the most bet boards king low low?
The most bet board, what size?
Uh, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, king low, queen low, maybe.
Nope, terrible.
Yeah, but after that, the king low low is, uh, king six, four off, king eight, six off, king eight, seven off, king seven, six off, um.
So.
Oh, you can, if, if.
Yeah, my boy be checked.
Flush draws. Follow either monotone or flush draws.
Checking sixty-some percent. Cause they have, they can continue easily on, uh, rainbow boards, right?
And like the middling straight boards are really bad for our three bet range, but really good for their calling range.
Yep. But like the jack ten is where we start seeing like jack ten low, right? We see the big bets.
We're looking at the biggest checks. Um, who's going now? It's all flush draws or monotone. So you based it on the suit and then it comes rainbow. Can bet more frequently.
Well, yeah, his calling range is gonna be mostly suited stuff. So monotone boards are gonna favor, he's gonna flop more flushes than us.
And then forty percent, this is where we started. Also be rainbow. Okay. So that's a really
What are, what are our? It's going down.
Yeah, let's see, let's see what our range bet boards are.
Well, there aren't gonna be any, right?
All the way to bottom.
We're gonna range bet trips, I bet.
The rainbow, rainbow. Rainbow with a king or a queen. Looks like a single high card, right?
We're bluffing a lot of our, our offsuit, king X and queen X, right? And ace X for that matter.
Paradise. Okay, back the flush, flush draw boards are back. But it's now low cards.
Bring low low, right?
Like eight, seven, four.
Oh, okay.
So here we are betting sixty-five percent. Alright. Queen, queen, queen. Pair board.
Nine, seven, six, we bet a lot. That surprises me. And we bet it. And we don't bet tiny.
No, it's good for buttons range too.
No, because you're gonna take pocket ten B, you're gonna bet ace nine B. Uh, ace ten ten. Paradise. And then the ones we've bet the most now, but seventy-five percent betting. The one with an ace. Or a king, rainbow. Disconnected.
Although there's a freak in there. There was a queen, queen, jack, ten hearts.
Well, we have ace, king, they don't, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but we don't polarize really on that. Look. Maybe we bet it a lot, but it's small.
Yeah.
Um, pair board, king, king. Seven. Trip says we have almost everything.
Pair boards mostly.
Tiny, tiny bet, six, three, four is all us.
Yeah.
Six, four, four, now these these hands were none of us, where neither of us should have it.
Range button paired boards.
So pair boards and trips board. Are very
Five, paired six is paired seven.
Like, I don't know, like king, king, seven, deuce.
What's ace, ace, ace and king, king, king look like?
Ace, ace, ace was a full range bet small.
It was seventy, no, it was like seventy-five percent.
Yeah, we just saw it. It was right there. There it is.
That's trip aces.
Ace, 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 is that?
Yeah, like ace, ace, X, king, king, X. I'm curious like how those play. There you go, seventy-five percent or so, eighty percent.
King, king, X.
Okay. So I range bet mostly.
Queen, queen, X. So. What do we check? Flush, when there's a flush draw. What do we bet? The rest. Let's give it a shot. It's a flush draw board. We got the goods though. Do we, did we bet turn, Ken?
Now we checked.
It's been so long, I don't remember.
Check.
Deck.
Ninety-nine percent it was, I think.
Check, call, not check raise. And then we wanted to look to see if we, if we checked it, if we checked the flop, did we, do we check raise the flop? So we call. We bet small, we call.
We can see. If we check the flop. And then he, he's betting six. We check raise this six five suited. Not really.
This is the spot where I put my chips in knowing I'm gonna lose a lot on the room.
You're just supposed to call.
Yeah.
Uh, so here we're gonna call, right? And then stop?
No, check. No, don't lead small.
I honestly wasn't sure. That's why I wanted to see the answer. I was, I'm not surprised we'd have these here. But I, I didn't know.
Uh, did we, did we just jam the river flood out?
Uh, no.
No.
Blocking thirty-five percent.
Okay.
Uh, we probably bet this one big probably.
This is a tournament wallet. Tournament strategy.
Thing is. We don't have a card of the sea. So we should be checking.
You can bet the bag or check. They're both fine.
Seventy-five percent or check, is it?
There'll be over bets on this board even. I think you probably want a spade over bet though. Um, so like if you had ace, queen with ace or queen of spades, it's like
Yeah.
Or thirty-six. This hand might squeak in there a little bit. I think it's gonna check like I don't know, twenty, thirty percent of the time and then size up the rest.
Yeah, I'm down seventy-five percent pot.
It just drips it.
All in.
What? Yeah, and this was thinking like sixty and eighty. I thought a hundred's too deep though.
Yeah, jack, it's a flush draw. This is the board where you jamming is king and queen is jack.
Uh, what does a spade make us do?
Play more passive.
More checks and with ace, queen?
I don't know, man. I don't know. The ace is passive, the king is aggressive.
Yep. What about ace, queen?
Ace passive, queen aggressive.
Queen of spades is always jamming.
So what is that main bet size for ace, queen? Cause I don't know what these colors mean. They don't seem to match the colors above.
The main size is jam.
Okay.
Jams and over bets. And I don't understand that jam at all.
It's just the nature of the like whenever it comes jack ten something with the flush draw. Uh, you're gonna do that a lot with this king, ace, queen, ace, jack.
Okay.
It's just a thing, but then the nature of the board.
It is a dynamic board where we'll have a lot, we'll have over pairs, we'll have sets and we'll have like straight draws with overs and all that just wants to put it in.
Very tough to play against because it's easy for them to bluff equity, but it's always like weak equity.
Right.
It'll take you long. I think this is a check.
Feels like a range bet.
You don't have spades.
Why does it feel like a range bet?
Jack low, low. I think we're gonna have a lot. I think we're probably gonna, not like a range bet, but we're probably betting seventy percent of the range.
That flush draw board, yeah, we need
I think it's like fifty percent. I think this hand mostly checks though.
Uh, split the difference.
Well, I thought, I, I think our range is checking like fifty percent of the time. Even more sixty.
Yeah, sixty-some percent. So the jacks, we lack a little bit of the jacks in the offsuit. I guess maybe that's why if it was a queen, maybe we bet a bit more.
You're not really gonna find many boards where you're betting like seventy percent of the time.
Nah, right? It was the paired boards mostly, right?
Yeah, queen checks less often.
Gotta bet now. Could I go check, check?
Yeah.
You got a value bet, you got a gutter. Probably pull, I'd probably go kinda big actually.
You wanna bet a side?
I think it's a value bet.
I'm checking.
I think we gotta go one street here. Please, to get value from more spaces. We get value from, uh, flush draws maybe.
We got a gutter. I mean, I would go somewhere between seventy-five, fifty. I think seventy-five is good. Nope.
I'm checking.
Checking or bigger.
Checking or?
Or smaller, or smaller actually. Uses ten, a hundred and check.
Uh, check six or twenty-five?
I actually use ten more than twenty-five.
Ah, okay. Okay, no, you're right. I missed that. So majority check.
I make a mistake there.
And then we fold.
Gross. Do we fold?
Well, I think so. We wanna
Yeah, no, not really.
You have two overs with the draw, yeah.
We butchered this one. Let's pay it again.
Yeah.
So what the hell do we do here? To bet or not to bet? It's a majority check, right? When we bet, what size? Small?
Yep.
We're out of position.
Probably half pot.
But small. Or check. So say we go fifteen, we bet it. I'm like
Now we have to
Continue with this one.
No.
Um, I think we have to just based off our range.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm so tempted to stuff it.
Backdoor flush two overs.
Just a bar. Yeah.
Oh, it's never a fold.
Uh-oh.
Rated ship.
Uh-oh.
Alright, hold up. Fold it off.
Oh, no.
No.
Well, it's losing chips, so good. I don't mind Nick folding.
Just crushed.
Oh, so crushed.
This is one of the boards that bet seventy, eighty percent, right? But I don't know about this.
I don't see this hand doing it though.
I'm definitely betting this hand small.
Yeah.
This is absolute garbage.
Yeah.
Oh.
Ace is too good for, for us.
Uh, probably check now. I could see betting small again though, but I think we kinda, we wanna polarize turn when we bet. So this hand doesn't wanna polarize, so I check.
I could see another small bet.
Check.
Or check.
I would check.
And the bet size when we do it is anything.
Got a call?
Oh.
Not gonna fold.
And check call.
And win. Or plays.
Uh, pure check?
No. I ain't checking.
I think this is a check.
I got an over to the board.
The flush draw board, it's coordinated. You don't have suit interaction.
I think our range checks like seventy percent on this board.
There's the six, six and our range are definitely checking. I think we have a thumb though, right? Oh. Well, surprise.
I mean, six is just good here a lot already. So I think
Wow, we're betting a lot. That's crazy.
Why would we bet so many sixes?
Why are we betting so much period?
Well, it may, yeah, that's right. We even bet none. Ah, we don't? Do we bet none spades?
We have all the other pairs. We got offsuit, king, king, queen and ace of si- sixes there. That's a decent amount of combos. We got suited sixes. Got a decent amount of sixes, eights, fives even.
Can we look at the, um, range breakdown between us and them? Like who has more, uh, garbage? Hit our ranges? Oh, we're just crushing him.
They got a lot more over car combos.
I don't. What does this stuff say? I don't speak Spanish.
It's French.
I know.
Mayor, man.
Los combos.
Uh, so we have more of the best hands. We have more good hands. And he has more trash hands. Wow. Yeah. So we're just crushing him on this board.
And our trash hands are better than his trash hands. Middle hands are better than his middle hands.
So yeah. The blue line is too high. Scotty, since you're here, tell us the difference between the lines.
So the, if you go to the left, it's showing our worst hands versus his worst hand. So our junk, our stuff that totally misses.
Yeah.
Beats his stuff that totally misses. So we're ahead on the, our junk is ahead of his junk. Our marginal made is better than his marginal made. And it's only right there near the top. Where he has a little bit, he gets a little bit of a nut advantage because he has seven nines that he might have a seven nine that we don't or something. So we have the range. Nut advantage for us to worry about.
We have the range advantage, but does he have the nut advantage?
No, it looks like it's equal at the very top.
He, he has the very nut advantage, but he don't, but if you look at where it crosses over, go look to where the crossover is and see, it'll show you how good the hand has to be.
It's when he flat aces, when he flats aces or flops two pair.
Yeah. And that is up at the ninety-fourth percentile. So he only crosses over. You know, he doesn't have a big nut advantage, but we definitely don't have the nut advantage.
But we don't, we just have the range.
We have a big, big range advantage.
Guys, mom asked if you wanted to chat.
We don't have, and, and we, he has a nut advantage, but it's a small nut advantage.
So is it that six percent of his range is the not advantage over ours? Six percent of hands, is it?
Um, well, no, it's only, it's only between the crossover and the second crossover is where he has an advantage. So see, from his nine, what is it? Like from his ninety-eighth percentile to there. So that's him with a nut advantage, but it's not a big nut advantage. And, and it, it, the reason I say it's not big is although it's tall. So his best hands are much better than ours. He doesn't have that many of them. It's not wide. A wide nut advantage would have the crossover lower.
Okay.
But this is one of the hands where he has it.
Can't fold, right?
And we have to call unfortunately.
Yeah, we have to fold, we have to lose more money. Oh, this is
Uh, we will have leads on this card. I don't think this hand wants to do it.
I think, you think our range does it sometimes?
Yeah, what, yeah, what aces, he does not have a ton of aces now, right?
Not really, a little bit.
It's don't jamming twenty percent of the time. What do you mean, not really? I was, I'm, I'm not jamming, but that's crazy. Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying we have leads.
Oh, yeah. Long jam, seventy.
I guess jam makes sense. It's one SPR.
Yeah, and he gets afraid of this and he gets afraid of the ace.
You check?
Now we have showdown value. We let him.
Yeah, I'm love catching.
You're gonna call here, Ken?
Yep.
And a sixty big blind pot.
Yep.
If he jams, are you calling?
Yep.
Oh my goodness. What if he just bet small again? Doesn't that mean, yes?
Hold on, before we look like, do we have enough aces to call without having to call with S R six X? Enough ace X and Hold on, before we look, like, do we have enough aces to call without having to call with S R six X? Enough ace X and eight X, I think.
Are we, we're not checking that many aces back on the river.
I think we probably do have enough to where we don't want to call with sixes.
You got a bunch of aces and eight X?
Looks like that king six was calling.
Yeah. We don't have, like, we don't have that many aces, there's hardly see them, we're betting them, we're gonna lead most of them on the river. We already have any aces, right?
We have to have a good, we have to have a good six to call.
Are you calling jack six?
I mean, like. Honestly, I don't, I'm not smart enough in game to know how many combos I have of each, but, so if I have a six here, I'm probably calling it. That's how, that's as good as I can get.
Which uh, king sixes are folding?
Uh, you got bad blockers here, a nine or a ten or a jack.
No, with the king though, it's mixing a little bit, which uh, suits. Folding spades, I bet.
A front door?
Yeah, so like it makes sense not to wanna have spades, right? That might be, like, I could probably figure that out, but beyond that, I'm not, I can't count all these combos to know how many I have to defend, you know, how many I can fold.
No, but you can figure out that a ten is bad. Right, and nine.
Yeah, your lower ones are blocking, because he's gonna bluff from the bottom up, I guess, right? So yeah.
And he bluffed his, and he bluffed his straight draws, he buffs, he bluffed his nine, ten. So a nine and a ten are bad.
Okay, interesting.
I'll just be honest, I'm gonna call too much there.
Maybe.
Check fold.
Hmm. Scotty, you think I'm, I'm paying for a tournament? Do three bets with jack pies? And not shake down the tree a little bit?
Not you, but the solver, a good player?
A good player.
Thank you, Scotty.
Yeah, I think it's a check fold as well.
You guys.
I'm still gonna bet short stack.
Check fold.
This is another, this is another spot I see bet too much mono boards.
Yeah, you can bet super small.
Look at this, look at all these betting, Scotty.
Yes.
Yeah. If it wasn't a three bet pot, like it was just a, you know, a normal pot and you were the aggressor, you would just bet one chip. Right, or one or two chips, so it's just gonna use the micro size a lot.
I, you know, Pete, I have to use more of that, because it's a bit of a thing like in three bet pots when the board is bare. Or when it's mono tone, right? And it's becoming like uh, close to like uh, not a three bet pot, kind of post-sloppieristic. Right?
Yeah, so you just use that ten percent side, bear.
Yeah. I bet it, bet if it had like really a one, they would go for it.
Yeah.
Oh, we check. Like Scotty said, good players would check. Not here. Check again?
Oh.
I wanted to bet.
You wanted to bet?
I, I did, I, I'm not sure I should, I mean, it was, it was fif- forty percent bets or something? I just know that I wanted to on that, because I do, I don't bet every one of my spades, he, and he bets, bets a lot of his single spades.
Well, again, it's a very tricky bet, that ten percent, one big line. Okay, and here.
We have no believable bluff, we're representing nothing, but we also can't win without betting.
Yeah, there might be a bit of give up, there might be a bit of small betting, and then there might be some like pot or over pot.
Okay, so we did not prune down our opponent's range, he still has better jacks. He has queen eyes, he has a size. And it's not always spades, and then he has some marginal six X or seven X that you might look at folding. Here. I think this is clearly a bet, we need to get rid of a size here. I've done stuff that beats us.
Yeah, I like betting.
Yeah.
So, we gotta bet, I don't know what size we get, we need to get a side to fold. I don't think we need to bet that much, between eight and fourteen. But we definitely have to shake down the tree a little bit.
I'm betting eight here, I think, I'm just targeting a lot of just better hands.
Yeah, a side, right?
Yeah, we have to bet, good, so we bet all the time.
Never check, you're just, you gotta try to get something to fold here.
Yeah.
And if it fails, backfire in your face, it doesn't matter, because you tried.
Yeah.
So an eight point five here, and then we get a side four. Get queen nine to fold, get better jacks fold. And that's all we need, that's all we're looking for.
Right.
So you're getting twenty-eight percent.
Never gonna get a six or a seven to fold here.
Yeah.
If you, if you pot it, how much does he, does he fold?
Um.
In real life, I think he calls you with a six if you pot it here, because you're just representing nothing.
Okay.
I don't know what the solver does.
Yeah, like I was wondering what the difference is, like, is it efficient to bet small here or bet pot, like you get much more to fold?
Well, did prefer the small size, that was probably optimal, but obviously, he's gonna fold more when we bet bigger, because that's just how the machine works, right?
Yeah, but folding range seems to be similar, we just hit more of the pocket tens, pocket nines.
Yeah, now he folds fifty percent range.
And he fo- and before he folded?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay, that's twice.
But you're risking more, so like it's just telling you, you don't really have to risk that much with that combo, I guess.
It's pulling from it sometimes, so if you wanna use big bets here, could be a good spot for.
I like big bets and I cannot lie.
Yep, you never, ever folding that.
Okay. So small or big?
Check.
It's a weird spot, I think the tens are gonna bet some, queens will check probably the most, jacks a little more, I think tens wanna bet at least some.
I don't think we care about tens here, we have the tennis babe.
I think checking like seventy percent of the time.
No, we bet more with the tennis babe, without the tennis babe, we check.
And I think we're, when we bet, we're gonna bet probably half pot, and we're check, right?
I would venture to say yeah, because it's connected.
Checking like seventy percent of the time.
Eighty. Eighty.
No, I'm saying what I'm doing.
Uh, I bet small. They're all the same.
Yeah, it bets more with a spade, that's true, but it just doesn't bet.
Well, when you call first, she doesn't answer, right?
Uh. That's right.
I, I thought it would bet more than queens would, that's why I thought I could bet some, but it was exactly the same hand. Gonna go check, check?
Yeah, do.
Check, check again. If he bets call.
Uh, we can bet small, I think now, checking also fine.
Small bet to block bet here.
Yeah, I lean towards small bet.
How small, thirty or ten, or ten?
Yeah, this uh, eight point five sizing.
Not at all, if we took this line to capture bluffs, right? So our only chance at this point is that he bluffs something.
So I'll tell you why I'm betting this, is because I wanna bet like jack five of clubs when I have it. So I'm gonna have a small block bet size, and it's gonna be weak hands, and then some just garbage bluffs. And that way he can't just call me with.
And we have like tens, we have like ten. And we have like ten, seventeen, if you don't wanna bluff.
Eyes up, no?
No, because I just want like queen hide if order better jacks, or maybe some low pocket pairs.
Oh, you're, okay, so it's eight, it's a little bit like last hand, right?
Plus, we can get some value still, I think he might find a hero, call it some nine X, eight X, if they block uh.
Yep, no, always bets, but just smaller.
Yep. For exactly that reason.
And just call.
Now we call. Because that's why we did it.
Oh.
So. Oh.
Did she raise that when we blocked that? Probably not, right?
No.
We did block that, didn't we? Or did we check?
Jack, the black bet was like two.
He's not raising us with that when we block that, we call cheaper.
Same thing, check.
Rainbow, we bet a lot.
Check. This hand doesn't wanna bet.
This hand doesn't wanna bet, that's sure, but I wouldn't be surprised if we bet it.
It's not a range bet board, so this hand's gonna check a lot.
Is it not?
Mm-mm.
You know, I bet eighty percent here.
No, probably like sixty?
Fifty fifty.
Less than that even, forty?
I don't know why. I thought rainbow was good, and then a side was, oh no, it's true, the a side row is not good at all. Okay.
I mean, if you're like, if you're like forty bigs deep, this is a range bet, but you, you just don't really have range bets a hundred big blinds deep.
Yeah, we're, we're like too polar with our ace, and then he's just too sticky with them. I have like, we have a lot of trash ones and the good ones, and he just has all of them.
So I, I think a good way to think about this is. Like, whenever you're shallower, not even shallow, but like forty, fifty big blinds deep, you're gonna be happier stacking off with more of your range in a three bet pot. Whenever you're this deep though, you, you're, you're not happy getting it a lot of the time, that's why you're range betting more at like forty or fifty. But you're gonna be checked, you're gonna have to bounce a checking range when you're deep stacked, because less of your range wants to stack off. And you see this a lot in our cash game studies.
Yeah.
At three thirty on Tuesday, Pacific time.
Nice plug, Scotty.
Yep. Oh, the, oh, the river with a king, I was gonna block that.
Um. Do we ever jam this?
These, these are the worst two cards.
Oh, I don't jam this.
I'm folding.
We block Jack ten?
Yeah, that's the only.
We got a lot of, we got queen X, king X, so maybe we cases maybe.
Find a dirty ball sometimes.
I'm not calling.
Oh.
Just three of them.
Range bet small?
We can bet bigger because of the flush draw.
I think we bet like ten percent.
I think we bet half pot.
Because it's a pair board, we don't get.
Yes, but it's, but it's a flush draw board too.
I can understand twenty-five, but I don't think we go bigger than twenty-five.
I think we go half pot with most of our range when we bet.
Wanna go fifty?
I do.
I forgot, heuristically, what, which did we say, that the pair, that the pairedness is more important than the flush drawness, or the other way around, just in general?
No, it's more important.
In that case, then we bet bigger. We bet fifty.
It's small.
Yeah.
Fifty adds some merit.
Yep.
But it's mostly small, and not.
But not tiny.
As long as you bet more those two sizes, you're golden.
Yep. And you can check a lot at being out of position, but now that we bet, now we, we size up.
Thirty-six or, I think I'm going thirty-six or.
Um, you don't have to go that big to get stacks in, right? And, and he still has better, like, I would go bigger with like the ace ten, and then K, this is the lower, the worst kick, our kicker gets, I think the smaller we wanna bet. So I think half pot.
I don't know, Ken, if you add a ten here, like ace ten. Like, you can, yeah, basically. Um. How are you gonna, like? I know it's weird if we size up here, but. Uh, what is he supposed to do with flush draws, you know, with like nine eighth of speed? You know?
Yeah, like, I think we wanna keep the fish on the line here, like, I mean, uh. I wouldn't surprise me to even see twelve, because it's still gonna give you a clean river shove. I'm like always betting half pot here, just to be geometric.
Yeah, I'm half pot.
Okay.
And you just look to see if ace ten bets bigger, just to pacify me, I think if you have a stronger ten, you actually might be able to bet.
To pacify me.
Uh, twenty-four, definitely.
No, bigger though, there's no really bigger bets.
Yeah, it's just, it's the geometric size to get it all in.
Yep. So the strength.
We mostly check the turn. That's weird. Well, that's terrible.
Black bet.
Damn it.
The flush completed, you wanna go in?
I'm not folding.
It's a weird thirty-five here, why are we not going in?
You're like only isolating yourself to better hands, um.
Okay.
Maybe because you're, you, your bluffs don't wanna go all in.
Gonna lose this hand.
But theoretically, this lover's gonna have some bluffs here, where in real life, they're not gonna have any.
Oh, what a bluffalo.
Whoa. That's not a, that, that, that's not, we're seeing, we're not seeing that in game.
Not too often.
Definitely, I'm the guy with pocket six.
You're not jamming that pocket, you're not, you folded the turn.
Yeah. Um. We check here.
Check.
And a spade we bet sometimes.
I'm gonna bet some. Value and protection.
Why are you on a bet?
Value and protection, we're gonna be, we're not, you know, we don't wanna just give them a free, you know, chance to peel a jack, queen, queen.
I do think we're steeping this board a lot more, it's like sixty to seventy percent of the time.
We need a spade, no?
No.
Two overs seem, is really shuts us down a lot, but just the one over we got, uh, I think barrel more, it looks like.
Yeah. Like, when you look at pocket eights and sevens, like, they, they start checking a lot more than pocket tens.
Yeah, that's a good example right there.
Right, we can still get, we can still get value from a nine here.
I mean, nothing changed, I, I mean, it might check some, but I would barrel again, probably.
I'm checking now.
I don't think it's a three.
Wait, did, did we better check?
It's a check.
Take check on the flop.
Oh, we checked, I'm, I'm betting.
Oh, we checked.
What side do you go for?
Uh, I'm betting like thirty percent, so. Six, I guess.
I'm going half pot again.
I don't mind half pot. I think it's mostly smaller though.
Too big.
Wanna get called back?
Yeah.
I'm so lost now, like, this is the shit that I hate.
Well, the thing is. In my mind, I would go three bet, or in reality, I'm not sure anymore.
Yeah, I think it's just a check now, we have marginal showdown, um, I'm getting it put in a box a lot though.
No box.
Uh, I think this is a high-frequency bet board. Yeah, rainbow disconnected, nine high. I think we probably wanna go like half pot though.
Are, are we not polar on this type of board? Since we check.
Sixty-seven to check.
No, I think it's like twenty percent check or thirty percent.
Okay.
I think we really push our overpair advantage on boards like this, and we just bet like half pot a lot, I could be wrong.
I'm with the big bet, but I'm, when we bet big, we're polar, when we polar, we check a lot.
Not overchecking.
Uh, I don't think so. Yeah, it's betting eighty percent of the time, and it's just we're pushing our overpair advantage.
Yeah, and then it's betting pretty big a lot, right?
Yeah, let's look, let's look at the uh, let's look at the compare, the range comparison. Yeah.
This is making me wanna study some cash sessions, just to get learn a hundred big blinds better.
Yeah.
Well, here, like. As we, as we said, we have the overpair advantage, and all of his student hands that call, we kind of get to price out. So he doesn't get to chase the backdoor flush against our big bets very easily. So he doesn't get to chase the backdoor flush against our big bets very easily. Scotty, I've been, Scotty and I have been training all year just for this, uh, session.
Yay.
So glad I made it back.
Oops, okay, so we have the queen of diamonds, you can blast.
I'm checking.
I'm blasting.
Yeah, I think either one's fine. I'm I'm mostly betting as well.
It's just because of the diamond, no diamond, no bet.
Well, my reason for wanting to check is we bet big and narrowed his range quite a bit. To a lot of nines and pairs and really good draws. We're ahead of, we're ahead of like his draws, basically.
Stay on that ace queen a little, ace queen offsuit a little bit longer, I wanted to see, I wanted to look closer about the.
The clubs at the bottom are.
Queen of diamonds bets, ace of diamonds doesn't bet very much.
Yeah, but if you look at king queen, the king of diamond is betting.
Yeah, the bottom line, like sixty percent of range is still betting here, right? If we bet the nine, we're gonna bet it when it pairs.
He called twice. We lost.
So we check here and if it was a four diamond, we go on him.
Probably.
Well, hold on, like, no draws got here.
Like said, if the four diamond, it was the four was a diamond, he said, go on.
Yeah. What do you wanna do, Pete?
He was punting.
Yeah.
Thinking about it anyhow.
I'm definitely thinking about punting here. I think the diamond's bad if you're gonna, uh, jam. And your hand is just too good, you're gonna pull from just worse hands than this.
Lone jamming from a diamond here.
No, I was punting.
Ah, well, the ace, no, 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 the ace, that's a thing. But it's not really jamming, right? It's like mixing all.
Well, that's if the flush completes, yeah.
Yeah, if you, if you know to find the clean queen of clubs, like I have no idea why that even matters.
Diamonds here, his jacket's a lot more clear.
Uh, the queen of clubs is good because you're not back backing any of the backdoor flush draws that continue on the flop.
You're not what?
Blocking any of the backdoor flush draws that continue on the flop.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, like when they have queen, jack of spades or queen ten of hearts.
So he's gonna have sixes every hand, it looks like. We can run him over now, we gotta.
Yeah, we know how to play.
We gotta tell on this guy.
Uh, he has sixes fold.
Yeah, yeah. Jack, he's got pocket sixes, dude. Alright. He had him three hands in a row, right? I thought it was stuck on there.
It's like roulette, it falls on the black three times in a row, has to be red after that, right?
My last poker session, the guy got pocket aces, uh, five times within three hours.
Jesus. Must be nice.
It was crazy. I think this is, might be a spot to check.
Bet small?
Almost a range bet, right?
I think we're betting a lot.
Yeah, it's a pair board, we're betting.
It's a paired board, but it's a paired board that's good for him. Uh, not so much.
Who cares, Pete?
I think it's pretty, uh, indifferent here.
Yeah, we got queen, we got queen seven off, king seven off, eight seven off.
I don't think he has that many sevens or jacks. Nobody has all the cards between them. Right? He's just gonna have a lot of continues against the small bet.
Well, we're getting value from those.
And, yeah, we get to just, uh, target all of all of his auto folds too, and we have worse hands if we're just, I think it's just a range bet board, can we check?
Pretty, it was like, uh, eighty percent.
Eighty percent of range?
Pretty much.
Eighty eighty percent of this hand.
Oh, well, we looked at the pair boards, it was still around eighty percent, right? Eighty, eighty-five?
It it depends on the, uh, the pair, but I think this one, yeah.
Aces and kings were like a little less, seventy-five percent.
Yeah, if he's opening suited fives, he's gonna be calling all of his suited sevens. Right? That's why I think like, this might be bad.
He, you think he's calling queen seven, uh, jack seven?
If he's opening queen five suited, he should be calling queen seven suited. I'm not so sure.
I don't, I don't think so, and I don't, but I don't know a hundred big blind ranges, honestly, I'm gonna look that up real quick.
Yeah.
I mean, I really have no fucking idea. Uh, well, we don't have a hundred big blinds, I'd have to go on pile, but at eighty.
Yeah.
You bet. Big blind. The queen seven, jack seven mixed folds at eighty.
Yeah.
At a hundred, though.
So this is a tournament about a hundred big blinds deep, what's the opening raise size from the button? Is it two point five, is it three?
I mean, you can probably do whatever you want.
No, I mean, I mean, in this, in this sim.
Well, I think Louis, was this sim early positioned open button flat and then we three bet and button called?
No, it's really button, button open with three bet.
Okay, okay.
Right, and and what was the but, what was the button's opening size?
Uh, two?
I think it's two point three.
Probably two point, okay.
Two point three, so still pretty small, even a hundred big blinds deep, you guys. Wow, you guys are weird.
You guys are weird.
Well, I mean, I use bigger in live games, I'll use three or two and a half, depending on how the table, how fishy the table feels.
Yeah, five X.
Do we bet this turn? Yes, we do.
No.
Why not?
We have just marginal showdown now, it weren't, not, it's not good enough to value bet, it's not weak enough to bluff.
What about blasting, digging and shoving river?
It's bad, we have better bluffs, we're too high in our range to turn this into a bluff.
You sure about that?
So. What about the the six of clubs turning, like if if you're gonna bet a six? This is the one because it still gets folds from all these suited stuff that floated.
Yeah, but you're beating all the suited stuff that floated.
Mm-hmm, but you're dying equity from it, right?
That's true, that's always.
Because like, do you, cuz here's the thing. You're you're beating it, but are you going to be able to weather the river? Sure, I'm a calling station.
How many minus EV hands do we have to call there? Cuz that's losing quite a bit of money and had to call, like, I'm just curious how bad. Our, how poorly constructed is our range? That we call shit that's losing so much money.
Like, why is he called floating with queen nine?
He has to. Well, cuz like, that's what I said about the jack seven seven, like, he's just connected in there with all that stuff and when you bet small. Like, he's just gonna continue with all this stuff.
But it liked this, but you're getting value from these.
I like the big bet, too.
Yeah, what's our charge with our whole range, though?
Mostly a big bet.
Really?
Yeah, twelve and then eighteen, that's like forty percent.
No, with our whole range, not just our hand.
I think our range won't bet smaller than.
Big forty percent of the time, too. Either one.
There is more larger bets.
More bigger.
Forty percent of the time, big, thirty percent, small.
Twenty-four percent, oh, I missed the, uh, okay, I missed the ten percent, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of half pot.
And this is mainly a function of being a hundred big blinds deep, I guess.
Yeah, half pot sizing, yeah, it's, uh, often. A sizing you're gonna use a lot.
Gotta bet.
Do you?
Why not? Check fold.
It's monotone, we figured out. It's suit related and we don't have the the suit.
Hold on. I was gonna say twenty-five percent. You can start getting some ace highs to fold, like, uh. I don't know, ace nine, ace eight, ace seven.
Even just ten percent.
Yeah.
You bet, he calls, what are you up to?
Uh, we're up to no good.
Yeah, barrel, small. Why are we barreling this?
Yeah.
Because I don't know what else to do.
It's a monotone board where the board didn't pair and the flush didn't complete, you just barrel small.
I gotta see where I'm at.
Out of position, I don't know.
Pretty far down the range, like, you wanna keep barreling.
You need, you need a spade to barrel, you need some sort of equity or blocker. You can't just bet all your air. I'm both there, air balling the court.
Now we got a king blocker.
And that's, that's just like the devil.
If we have a king of spades here, are you blasting?
I'm all, oh, yeah.
Turn up with the king of spades, though.
A O B X. Well, you can check jam the king of spades, too.
Abort, abort missions.
He always has pocket sixes.
Uh, that's probably a check. Hour and a half from now.
Yeah, we, the range checks a ton here, right? We saw that.
I don't know, I think it's a bet.
It's gonna bet some, more than, it's gonna bet more than pocket jacks, but it's, I think it's checking a lot still.
Yeah, I think with the spade, I wanna check here.
We just block everything.
Yeah. It also protects our range pretty well. Why I'm checking it. So I have a lot of junk I wanna check too. Or draws.
Well, we bet, we bet tiny.
We're happy to get a hundred big blinds in, but it's gonna be hard because of how much we block here.
We gotta bet.
Yeah. Can you go check, check?
Yeah.
Yeah. I probably bet like half pot.
Yeah.
Yep, keep the flush draws in. Even larger.
No one has twos at all.
I would check or block that here.
Let's think about it, LP.
Seventeen?
Hold on, let's think about it. We clearly have the nuts and they can't have the nuts. Well, they could have, no, they really can't have the nuts, quad twos is like their only nut at hand. I think we wanna go eighty-seven percent.
I think it's mostly a check and then the rest, like Pete said, we're betting small. Like, even this five percent, nope. It's just max greed, I don't know what we get called by.
And we never check.
I guess we don't like bluffs, but.
It likes sixty-one percent the most.
He had an ace, yay.
Yeah, I mean, both with double flush draw breaking, I guess we just have enough bluffs, but. I would be inclined to check and try and let him bluff, cuz. Yeah, same. And just protect my range or bet small, so I'll, uh, put that in my bet small range, protect my weak hands. Yeah.
So we could mix in like, we're gonna have like ace queen, ace king, ace jack, that we can mix in those smaller bets with, right?
I'd rather bet very large with those hands because, um, it's more likely he has an ace, right?
Can you go back and look at the sim to see how we construct, uh, that por- portion of our range on these types of, uh, boards?
You're just doing this cuz you'd rather have pocket aces than have to play this ace jack suited here.
No, I've been actually working with twee games some, so I'm trying to construct that theory in my head a little, it's like, I only looked at through them once. I need to go through them a couple more times. But it's really, uh, really great way to construct your range if you haven't done those yet. Or I think they're fun, I think it's phenomenal.
They're what, even?
Twee games.
I don't know what that is.
Boy, T O A Y.
I don't know what that is. Yeah, where you only have two choices.
You know when you have a.
Well, no, you have more than two choices. Uh, we could talk about it after he stops recording.
Okay.
So, yeah, the ace jack goes, um, bigger here. Cuz it's still essentially the nuts. But it's not the super nuts, the super nuts just will really wanna put chips in.
Uh, ace queen checks back here. Uh, not ace ace and queen, queen checks back.
Yeah, ace queen's gonna block some of their calling range pretty hard, right? Aces and queens. So that's a really good check, too.
Anyone checking pure with pocket queens?
That makes sense. Yeah.
Would you?
It's it's a little better because they can still value bet an ace, they're more likely to bet an ace, they're more likely to just check back a queen on the river.
So interestingly enough, like, look at their range, I bet you, do they have queens but not kings and aces?
No, they have.
Are not kings? They don't have kings, right? They do? Okay, so. And they had aces as well?
Yeah.
Yep.
Check here.
I'm checking. Is this gonna wanna just push the overpair advantage, that's small? Oh, it's like, uh, rainbow disconnected low board, this one's too coordinated.
We're gonna lose this hand now.
It's just a check, or we'll try to get a showdown and never make it.
Yep.
We might actually have to.
Hey, that was fun.
He's happy.
Never bet us off, never tried to bet us off an ace. Would he bet a a lower king there to try to get a bigger king to fold?
Yes.
Okay. So that's why.
We check?
Mostly bets small.
Check again.
I think we can bet for thin value. Oh, absolutely, call.
Raise, what about raising?
How about not raising?
How do you get paid?
Because. Because you're you're, your raise is on, you're. The raise is almost a bluff.
It's not strong enough to raise.
Yeah, not in this board.
Is it not?
Sliver.
Maybe with a spade, you can do it some.
Yeah.
Okay, would you raise with the spade?
So if you raise, what is gonna call you that's worse?
With a spade.
Maybe, you know, maybe other, maybe some other aces will call you, maybe.
Yeah, a main speed.
Ace queen with, ace queen with the ace, ace queen with the, uh. Queen of spades, maybe.
This time I see it now.
I like to bet this combo.
Alpha?
Uh, yep.
Because the tennis babe?
Sure.
Even bigger.
Yep, but we always bet this combo, this is never checking.
Uh, we would bet bigger because our jacks and tens are gonna wanna bet bigger.
Backdoor heart. Tree, pretty breaking.
No, we picked up no equity.
Doesn't help the bets.
We bet fifty percent, we bet big, so. I think we're done.
Time to give up?
Yep. Give up.
Good night.
Time for the nap.
Check call.
So our gutter isn't very clean here.
No, it's terrible.
Yeah, like, I'm wondering if this is a fold.
Uh, I don't think we get to fold a pair, the one bet.
Yeah, we haven't lost enough money yet. Yeah, we haven't lost enough money yet.
That's right. Nah.
Yeah.
Nah, does it feel like we lost enough, Scotty?
Yep, yep.
Thanks for as well.
I like watching this one, and I'm laughing.
And I, I have to admit, I do not understand why that is good poker, I know it's solver poker, but I don't know why.
The turn can, can come the bottom card, and then you pair, and then you hit the nuts, or you can go check, 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 check. Or sometimes can make a goofy bluff catch, and then you could be right.
Yep.
There's a bit of EV in that line, but. Not, not, um, we just prayed that it gives up, basically. Like here?
Can we please fold this one?
Huh?
Yeah.
No, we're gonna flush with this one.
Yeah, we got a pair added backdoor, if I just had a backdoor, I would fold.
Yeah, we can't fold that.
Get the barbecue.
This is also what you can.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, do we get docks?
Yeah, I wanna dock. It's our three bet back, it was ours all along, now we just get to scan.
We will have, we will have donk's on this card, I think you can check or bet, they're both fine.
What size do we dock?
Forty percent.
I like the forty percent.
You're gonna be polarized here.
I think it's small, we do it.
Not surprised it's small, see, that's why I was.
A lot of checks. Alright.
All in or call?
Do we double dock, do we call and double dock?
All in?
No, we just make it happen.
Yeah, well, of course, it's all in. Got him.
Yep.
That's a big pot, that's happy days, that's like, let's win this thing.
Yeah, like, I mean.
Two hundred pigs, let's go.
Backing off with top pair, medium kicker, like, solver, get it fixed.
Okay, so.
This probably checks a lot, here's the thing, like, Kings are gonna check a ton, so, like, how many of our King X combos bluff?
I would bet there.
This one, because it can turn the straight draw on the top and the bottom.
It's got the backdoor straight, uh, straight draw, right, and it's got a shitty backdoor flush draw. King highs decent, so it probably doesn't wanna bet, right? All that makes sense, but I just know Kings themselves aren't betting much, so I don't know how much we've stole. How much plus we have. With our King X. Just trying to construct a range in my head, I'm not so, it's an interesting way for me to look at it.
I guess this is a high frequency half pot bet.
Yeah, I might even polarize here and go over, right? We block the front door and the backdoor flush, we have both, uh, straight draws. That we can barrel.
There's no polarization here on this type of texture. Oh, there it is, there it is.
Yeah. Oh, it's King four, not King five.
Okay, four's a pair.
Yeah.
But King three, like, the wheels are bluffing, right? King three, King five, King.
Yeah.
Some, like, I would never find King six, unless they're spades, are they spades, the King five and King six? The, uh, suited?
Yes.
The, the five of spades, not the king.
And the suited, and the suited ones?
The king and, the king and spades, Scotty.
Oh, I can't see that?
The red, red part.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you. I was very confused.
Rooms cleaned, you're packed up.
Oh, what, what are we supposed to do here?
And grandmas? Yeah.
Fold, we're supposed to fold. Supposed to fold to that small bet.
Jeff, what are you doing?
We gotta test him, man, he had two pair of it.
Check call. And che- and check fold the turn.
Yeah, we got some showdown, right?
Check.
Check.
Nine, eight, seven. Six. Five, post, checking.
And swing.
Happy days. Bet.
Bet small.
Yep.
This is a check, we have a five.
Yeah, that's good enough for me to bet.
This is a bet small.
Why are you guys wanna this though?
Cause you wanna start cleaning up some equity, I mean, you know.
Okay.
It's good a lot on the flop, wow.
What do you think?
We have two, we can't fold this.
In real life, I'm folding, I don't.
We have two backdoors to go with it, we can't fold.
In real life, you're not getting check raised bluff, it's a fold.
We didn't get to check raised bluff, we checked call, we, we got check. What?
Are we going for the four?
Oh.
Call.
Yeah, I think we're calling.
Which of, a four ain't helping us.
How do you figure this out?
We picked up the, we picked up enough equity with the deuce.
We have second pair plus a flush draw, we can't fold.
We jam?
I don't think so.
We block sets of fives, we got a flush draw, we got seven high. Oh, feels bad.
Seven high, we have pair of fives.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, we have no over, like, I don't know, man. Feels like we could jam here sometimes.
I don't like jamming.
I think the things that fold to our jam, we have beat.
Yep.
Yeah, but it's gonna be hard to realize the equity, like, if they, like, if they keep barreling, what are we gonna do if we don't improve?
So what kind of odds do we get?
What kinda what?
Par odds.
I don't know, you have to figure it out.
He bets, he's betting half pot.
So it's three into twelve.
Twenty-five percent.
Exactly.
Well, we got a pair already.
How often do we make the flush?
We already got a pair, we could be good right now.
I know, how often do we make the flush?
We make the flush on the river twenty percent of the time.
Roughly twenty, and then we could be good with the five, and then we have some outs to the four, and then, uh.
We don't have outs to a four.
The four is not good, we have outs with another five and a seven.
Yeah, four's probably bad.
That's right, we don't have a four.
Right, but we easily have.
A seven, three outs.
And, and, and the other two fives, we easily have fourteen outs.
So, what percent of your range do you have to continue with versus bet sizing? Anyone remember the old MDF?
Yeah.
Uh, this is like thirty.
Thirty-five percent.
Wait, to continue thirty-five percent of the time?
No, we gotta call, we gotta win one and four, right? So was it seventy-five percent?
No, no, he's talking about, no, he's talking about MDF.
You gotta defend like seventy-five percent.
So, is this hand in the top seventy percent of your?
Plus bet, right?
Definitely.
So it's sixty divided by ninety, we have to, we have to defend.
It's so, so high in your range, you can't even think about folding it.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, it was fun.
We probably, we probably have to call.
Yeah.
With this, that diamond?
No, we can fold.
It's just, we have a pair of five, so we have to call.
I agree, yeah.
Poker is stupid.
SPR so shallow, this is a third pot bet.
Nice way to lose a hundred big blind.
Hundred big blinds.
With seven, five suited, I would turn my computer, I would shut my computer off. And be done for the day.
Damn, Ken, I would fire another round right away.
I know you would. I'd be disgusted.
Look at how proud that, look at how proud the solver is of us, good job, you guys.
You don't have to be disgusted or anything, you tried, and it didn't work, you just fire again.
It's like, I, that's a hand I could go look at the solver, say, okay, I'm right, and then, but still know in my mind that that guy's a hundred percent, that he was doing that line, a hundred percent not stacking off with a bluff.
Okay, so, rainbow board, so we can bet that off, ten nine, so we're gonna be polar. King, we get better Kings to fold, backdoor flush, overcard, so we bet here every time, right?
Feels good.
I think it's a high frequency bet, yeah?
We hit the gen card, is it good, is it bad?
Check.
Good.
Um, this one can.
Oh. One of our worst Kings, I thought it would check some.
I thought it was gonna bet small a lot, I'm not polarizing here.
Eh, blasted, we're going for the, oh my goodness.
I mean, we have to call, but, what's our range doing on this card?
If somebody does that to you in game, you can confidently fold.
He has Jack, Queen or Diamonds, it's fine. Damn it.
Oh, we rivered him.
Oh, yay, oh, I love.
Happy days, fire up another table.
Just one time, baby.
Turn the computer back.
What's our range doing on that King turn?
Think. We're not playing. We just played because we had it. King was not so good, cause he defends all the suited Kings, but it's the turn, right? So maybe the Kings are gone.
Oh, we still have a lot of King X though, and we have like, we're, we're C betting a lot, so we have a lot of King X still, though.
I just think, I didn't necessarily believe we were gonna borrow all of our.
Or just range, range betting.
A last thing on the king. Would we do the same on an ace?
Probably not.
So how does this play differently than a, than a single race pot, like, a single race pot, are we checking our worst King some? And we're just happy to get it all in, cause it's a three bad pot, and the pot's getting big already, SPR is low. So we're just going with our worst Kings.
Yeah, I think when the King came, but we did it with range, so it's not.
Yeah, I think it depends on the board, Ken, so that was just a range bet spot, so we were betting everything, if it's a spot where we're splitting our range, I think that hand will check.
Oh, confusing.
Oh, good turn, Ace, King is best. King is best, followed by Queen. Jack, and then Ace. So we need the nine card, basically, as a three better, but that makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks a lot for watching, everybody, uh, if you're watching on YouTube, uh, make sure to like, subscribe. If you wanna see a spot next week, uh, leave a comment, and we'll get over it. Join, make sure to join our Discord community, our Patreon community, we have other study groups, uh, the Cash Game. The MTT, um. Free flop, uh, on Monday night, the Cash Game on Thursday, uh.
Tuesday.
Cash game on Thursday, cash game on Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Tuesday morning and Tuesday at three thirty Pacific time.
Okay, nice, well, thanks a lot, everybody.